So we'll move on to item seven. Comments from council members. This one, we'll take A first, then we'll go to B if that's okay. So discussion potential, November 2020 ballot measures suggested by Marty Medina, cannabis fireworks, rotational mayor, charter city, fire district, hotel tax, term limits. So I want to turn it over to you and if you could cover your items, take the time you need.
Sure, thank you Mayor Medina. And I first want to start by thanking our city manager for creating this new process to agendize council topics. And this is the very first step in actually having a public discussion on whatever item it is that a council member wants to put on the agenda to discuss. So I'll go ahead and jump in. On April 30th, 2018, the council held a revenue option study session and various items were reviewed and implemented. We learned that cities are limited in the ways that they could increase revenues. So the council, we did increase the parking citation amount, we did do that. We placed a sales tax measure on the 2019 ballot, Measure G, and it passed. We heard tonight that council is proceeding with regulating Airbnbs and having them pay the transit occupancy tax. And we also learned that staff is continuing forward with the 2020 ballot measure to increase the hotel tax. So those were some of the revenue options that were discussed in 2018 and we're moving forward with. There were some other ones that were identified in 2018 that we haven't yet talked about. And after tonight's financial update, it is extremely clear that we will be facing even more budget challenges in the immediate future. So the first one is cannabis. I understand this is a highly controversial subject. My position remains consistent. I am concerned with having cannabis dispensaries and businesses in our cities. However, I'm also aware that cannabis is readily available in San Bruno. We now have the ability to look back at how the legalization of cannabis businesses have affected other communities. And most importantly, my stance is that I believe that the decision ultimately belongs to the voters of San Bruno to decide if they want cannabis businesses operating in San Bruno. So I'm asking tonight for the council to have a study session, first to talk about the cannabis situation and its potential revenues. And then after having that discussion, we could make an informed decision on whether we should allow our voters to make that decision, to have legal cannabis businesses operating in San Bruno. So that's number one. I know that council member Mason is also interested in the subject, so I'll pause now if that's okay with you. And so we're, people get tired of me talking for more than a few minutes, so if that's okay with you.
Yeah, so Marty, yours just says cannabis. Were you talking about dispensaries specifically or beyond that? Just because I know Linda's says dispensary specific.
Well, there's the cannabis research businesses that could be allowed, there's the dispensaries. I heard of some warehouses, grow houses, but I think the primary thing to look for here would be for the dispensaries and probably to allow the legalization of the research and development that other cities have allowed. There's not too many open fields to grow it and there's a lot of problems with putting these grow warehouses with the odors and so forth. So having it open, more open to talk about the whole industry is my intent, but I'm, we can't talk about it too much, but I could put that request forward, so I thank you for that.
No, 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 probably just wanted to get, because it was broad. So Marty, do you want to go through yours or are we going to go back and forth? Or are we taking them all together?
Well, I could do it, however, makes most sense. It seems like I was thinking that if I brought it forward, that at some point we would make a decision to agendize it. So it would be important that each council member either says yes or no, we should agendize it, and then I can go to the next one and so that it kind of forms a process. This is the first time doing it, so I'm open to however.
What I'm hoping is you can go through your items because what I wanted to do is too is also open it up to the public. And so they may have comments on that too.
Okay.
So they can make their comments. Because you have hotel tax, but now that may not be, since it's moving forward, you may say, okay, well, skip that.
That's exactly what I'm going to say when I get to it.
If I may, Mayor Medina?
Yes.
We may need the attorneys that are on this stuff. But I thought we were going to go through each one and then take action based on the instructions that were sent as to whether the council agrees that these are areas that we would like the staff to further research and bring back with an agendized topic that we take action on whether to place on the ballot or approve as an ordinance. And so in an effort not to take away from the public's ability to comment by putting them all together, you're only giving somebody an opportunity to speak for three minutes on every single item that's agendized together. So I would request respectfully that we take each item individually and I'd be happy to take cannabis and make my comments now so that we don't have to go back to it again when, I guess, my discussion item comes up. But I do think that each item should have its own public comment, just to make sure that the public has an opportunity to speak on the item.
Any other thoughts from my colleagues?
I can concur if that's what you're looking for.
Yep, I'm just looking for, like Marty said, we're kind of walking down this path for the first time, so just trying to do that, but also trying to be mindful and keep screaming and I know that going back and forth. Michael?
Well, I would concur that it makes most sense if there are duplicates between the two lists that we address each of those items together. And then, of course, if there are comments from the public, I suppose that we could give them time to address each topic as we cover them. So I'm okay with doing that as well. Of course, it would be good to know how many speakers we have because with the number of topics that we have to cover here, I want to make sure that we're not going to overwhelm ourselves or maybe need to adjust the amount of time allocated to each speaker.
Good point. So, well, why don't we start to walk down a path and then we'll see how we go from here. So why don't we take the cannabis lung censors duplications as was indicated? Why don't we touch on that and then see? And if we start to find ourselves that we've only gotten through three and, you know, we find ourselves not making the progress on it, then we'll maybe adjust. But for right now, why don't we take the cannabis one? So Linda, since it's on both lists, why don't we do that?
Great, thank you. So I echo Councilmember Medina's comments, just thanking the city manager and the council for getting to this point where we can, we have a process to initiate policy. We're in a multimillion dollar deficit and development may be the only way to assist us in getting out of this hole. But what if development slows down or halts, especially given the presentation that we just had? We really need to ask ourselves if we're putting all of our hope in a single opportunity for revenue that we don't actually know at this time is going to amount to anything more than, you know, a hope of development in San Bruno at this point in history with this pandemic that we're in. Since cannabis has become legal in California with an approval rate of, I believe, a bit over 60% in San Bruno, the city of San Bruno really should research the industry and its impacts in other locations to determine what the benefits and drawbacks would be to allowing a dispensary in San Bruno. Those who are in favor of cannabis are balanced with those who have expressed concerns that San Bruno will be overrun by cannabis dispensaries or cultivation. This is really an opportunity for the council and the public to learn more about these possibilities. For example, can the council limit the number of dispensaries to one or maybe two downtown through zoning? Which models have been successful throughout California now that it has been a couple of years and cities have implemented this law around cannabis? Is cultivation something that San Bruno even wants to consider? What are the financial benefits to allowing a cannabis dispensary? These are all questions that will inform our decision, not only if we agree that it will benefit San Bruno to at least be fully informed of this option. Neither of us can solely direct staff to spend time researching this, but three of us can. We just need three votes to get data to then make a fully informed decision. I hope that all of my fellow council members will support this fact finding request to determine the benefits of cannabis in San Bruno and the adverse impacts. If we don't move this forward, we are not making an informed decision that really could help San Bruno in this time of need that may only get worse given the current status of the economy. Thank you.
Thanks Linda. And I know, I was going to say, I don't know how to put my hand up, but my hands, and something new here. And then Laura, I see your hands up. And then we'll open it up after that. Council have immediate comments and we'll open up to the public. Laura?
Well, I was just going to make it pretty simple since I know that we have two council members that are already very much in support of bringing this back and getting a report from staff. I too am very interested and I think that other council members on this council concur. When we talked about this, I think it was two years ago at least, where we were sort of pigeonholed into making a last minute decision so that we could not get ourselves in any type of situation and we didn't have really the time to invest, to investigate and to understand the options. I am very interested in bringing it back to see what kind of opportunities we could have in San Bruno. So that's it.
And then on mine, I was going to say when we, again, we passed it in October, a ban completely because we really didn't have many options. January was taken effect with the state and therefore if we didn't do something, we would lose all local control to do what we wanted for our community and have no options. So that's why the council unanimously took the vote at that time. And I remember at that time too, even when it came to research, the five of us that were there then all agreed that that was something that people were open minded to and wanting to reexamine. So obviously there's a new person, but I think that is something that there was concurrence on with the council back then. But in essence, I can tell you from where I sit personally, you know, if we were going to have this question asked, to me, it would be decided by the people of this community, not by me being one of five. I think it's important to have it straight. As people have reminded me, yes, Prop 64, if my memory is correct, when it passed, it's through the state, out of the people that voted, let's say 60% of San Bruno. Some people have said, well, yes, I'd be in favor, but yes, I didn't vote, I voted yes, but it wasn't to say yes, vote for dispensaries in San Bruno, I voted on the state initiative for recreation. So we have to be quantified with that, but that's why also to me, to really get the figures, right? So in San Jose's case, like what you were saying, Linda, they only allow X number within the community. And again, to staff, it would be, so are you just going to say up or down, yes or no to dispensaries or is it going to be more quantified? Is it going to be quantified as to a number? Like there's a number of gun shops, there's a number of casinos that have been regulated by councils in the past, when there used to be two of each, and now there's one of each. And then where? And I think that would be another part of the community's concern is, well, just don't tell me you're going to do it because now we're going to have a concern of where are we doing it? So I think it needs to get more of that in the study session that was indicated so that those things are worked out and it's just not a yes or no. And then all of a sudden, there's all this, coming back to a council of five, whoever they are, and saying, you know, now let's work out the details. So that's just one side note for me on that. And Michael, did you have anything before I open it to the public?
You know, I'm hearing, I'm hearing a couple of different things from both you, Rico, and from Marty in that you're saying, on one hand, I want to know the facts, and on the other hand, you're saying the voters should decide. So if the voters should decide, what facts do you really need to know, other than let's leave it up to the voters to decide? Now, if you're saying, I need more facts, now you're saying, I want to decide, I want to decide whether we should put it on the ballot. So which is it?
Because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time I think we're all doing this. My understanding in speaking with, I think it was city manager Grogan, was that today's vote is just to then agendize it to vote on putting it on the ballot. And that in the meantime, that staff would be providing us with a staff report with information requested. That's my understanding.
And that is, that's the way I understand it as well. But what, if we decide today that we want to sign this to staff, that means that we are making a commitment for them to do research and bring it back to us to make a decision on whether or not we want to put it on the ballot, based on what staff decides. Now, first of all, we've already heard that we're going to be constrained this coming year. And so if we want to get something on November's ballot, that means that we have to cram this in somehow into their workload. And I'm wondering, where, we don't even have any facts to justify whether this is going to be a good thing, a bad thing, whether it's going to generate revenue, whether anybody's even interested in coming to San Bruno. We want to dedicate staff resources now to investigating that and do it within that timeframe of between now and November along with everything else. So my concern there is, is it really that urgent? Do we absolutely need to get it on the November ballot? Is this something that we can allow staff to work into something, you know, that they can accommodate more comfortably, given everything else that they're doing? Or is it something that we want to? And I think that that really becomes the big decision that we have to make tonight is, are we telling staff, go and work on this because we want to do it by November? Or are we saying, there is an interest in discussing this, but let's do it when it makes sense? Those are my comments.
And Marty had his end.
Well said. Hey guys, this is a great discussion, right? We're finally talking about it. And the next step, and is having a study session, right? And to get more information, and if we needed to get a subcommittee, we could do that too, if the mayor allows it, to refine that. But I'll tell you that I was surprised somewhat that this, how it was agendized, that it's just for the ballot, if that's how, that's the language to put a ballot measure.
Yes.
I wanted to just talk about it. It's going to lead down to, if we, after we talk about it, whether or not we pursue a ballot measure because like, one of the other things that I have on my list here, charter cities, we don't have enough time, from my understanding, to do a charter city, but we have, we got, we have to, we're doing things different in San Bruno, right? For the better of everybody. And we need to have discussions about these things and not be so reactive to things, right? We have unprecedented, unprecedented financial crisis and we have to look at other ways of operating. So my interest is to have the study session, to become more informed, and then if it doesn't happen, this ballot measure, then it could happen the following year, you know? But we need to start talking about this because, I'll be straight up with you, I have a young son. I'm concerned about a dispensary in my town, but I'm also not too naive to think that my son today, in five years, in 10 years, he will be able to access marijuana and I won't be able to stop him. I can't be a helicopter parent for all my life. So us talking about this is the first step of other decisions that we need to make. And I'm glad we're talking about it this far. And if we need to refine what that study session is, then we could do that, but we have to at least start and maybe we can ask staff in the next few minutes on what they propose or what they think they could take on. Because yes, this is too much to try to do in this amount of time. But this is a new process that we have, guys and gals. We didn't have this way of agendizing things, although we were interested in it, it just never was formalized. So again, I think we're making huge progress tonight on a Zoom meeting, talking about agendizing topics for our council. So I don't know if we need, where we need to go from here, Mr. Mayor.
Well, and Michael, I appreciate your comments, but Marty, I appreciate you quantifying that because even with eight different things between the two, my thought was, and that's why I was maybe wanting to take it in a group, because as it listed on the agenda, it's this November. Well, there's no, in my world, in the reality, there's no way to say, here's staff, here's eight of them, and they're going to say, we're not in the middle, that you're the policymakers, you're going to tell us what to do and we're going to have to try to find a way to get it done. That's not the most efficient, but there's eight different items. But I appreciate what you're saying, which is, no Rico, I'm not saying all these go on the ballot, I'm just saying have a discussion or have a study session. And if it works, it works, if it's 21 or 22, then that's okay too. Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth.
No, that's accurate. If there's something that could be done, you know, the advantage that we have now compared to a year ago or two years ago, is that we have, we have seen what other cities do. We don't need to reinvent the wheel entirely, right? So that's where I'm at. I just want to be able to have the discussion, right? Then we go from there.
Linda, you had your hand up. Linda, did you have?
Yeah, sorry. So I do have another comment, but I'd first like to know from city attorneys at Fran, what the timeline is for getting an item on the ballot this year.
So normally that would be required for the county, and Melissa can chime in too. Around the first week of August is the deadline for having everything to the county.
Okay, great. So with that said, I do have to say that I think, given our financial situation, I actually do believe that we want to get the information, we want to have the discussion, and we want to make a decision whether to place this on the ballot this year. I don't think that we can wait. I think we have a lot of things that are waiting. We've got development that's waiting, we're looking into the TOT tax, I don't know how long that has been, that has been on the burner. We have Measure K funds that have been kind of hit and miss for the last year, even though they've been available for years. We've got, I mean, we have some pretty serious issues and I think that if you look at the city of San Carlos, if you look at the city of Palm Springs, they all have had public discussions around this, they've all had a series of meetings around this, including the zoning and where the zoning would go for dispensaries or cultivation. And to Mr. Medina's point, there are a number of cities that have already adopted this, so we should be able to learn from them. I don't think that we should wait. I wouldn't say this for every item, but I do think, given our financial situation, this is not an item that I think we should just have a discussion on and then move on to another election cycle. I do think we need to make a decision whether to place this on the November ballot or not to truly help our city out and let the voters decide.
Javon and then Laura.
Sure, Javon, Grogan, city manager. I don't want to express an opinion on any of these that council would like to direct staff to look into. I just wanted to provide a little clarity on why they're on this agenda in this fashion. And so ordinarily, ideas like this would go on the city council's priority setting process where you give staff direction on what strategic initiatives you would like us to look into and put into the work program. These are agendized because council member Medina and council member Mason had specific ideas that they would like to be placed on the November 2020 ballot. And to have that conversation really need to happen sooner because our priority setting process has been delayed. So that's why we're talking about these vis a vis the November 20 ballot. Now, if there's anything on here that council wants to look into and have more information, you don't feel that you have to direct staff to do that now, that can be done during the priority setting process and built into the regular work plan. These are here because the two council members wanted to talk about them. And so if there are any items that you guys think that should occur on the November ballot, it's sort of tonight, give staff direction so we can begin working on that and then come back to you with the information and all the various policy decisions and study sessions that have to happen. I think the other thing that I want to say is, there's a lot on the work plan, we're in an unprecedented public health crisis, we have a budget shortfall that we have to solve now, we have the budget shortfall that we have to solve for next fiscal year, and we're in a new normal. And so just think about that as you say what items that you really want us to look into for this November 2020 election, because that, it's a lot of work and we can work to push some things off the plate and have staff work on them. But if you just want to look into something but not have it go this fiscal year, I think there's a time where we can slot that in and do that analysis that isn't sort of connected to all the other things that we're working on now with the budget and the public health crisis.
Laura?
Can we just get public comment first?
Are you okay? Hold on. Okay, that's yes. Melissa?
We have, we have one hand, that's Stephen Seymour, so I'm going to allow talk, it's either Stephen or Sandra Pernas Vargas.
Yeah, because those are the only two that can be in this house.
Those are the only two that I know in your house, so.
That's it, right now, during this unprecedented time. So, when do I start?
Right now.
Okay. So I just want to thank you all for having this conversation and I really like what I'm hearing. And if we're talking about a budget shortfall, cannabis is one way that you can help mitigate that. We're talking about cannabis, but we have alcohol in our city, we have it on all around our downtown, you can go and buy anything you want, there's no reason that we shouldn't be able to also purchase cannabis. I'd like to let you know that right now, if you wanted to leave the city by cannabis, you go to Redwood City or Pacifica or San Francisco and they're taking our tax dollars, they're taking San Bruno's tax dollars. I want to tell you about, and then after I, Sandra's going to talk. But a few years ago, I went to Half Moon Bay City Council meeting and they decided in that city council meeting to put several things on the ballot. They put dispensaries, clones, delivery, and I think that may be it, there were three things. So I really like what Mike Salazar had to say and what Linda had to say and really what you all had to say, but I think this is something that you put out and you let us vote on it. Let the public find their way in on this. You could go to Half Moon Bay and find out what they put on their ballot measures two years ago and it wouldn't take a whole lot of effort or time. You could basically just use their verbiage. But I think it's also important that you add research and development because we're so close to South City and other areas in the nearby cities because there's a lot to be said about research and development with THC. And then let's think about the time that we're in, we're in the coronavirus. There's a lot of people who are at home, there are a lot, and we've got, people are sheltering in place, they may have issues that they're dealing with because they're not able to get out and cannabis is something, THC is something that's widely subscribed to people who have depression and other medical issues. So I really like the way this discussion is going, but I really think you need to move quick on this. You need to just ask Javon and his team to put together a few, draft a few ballot measures and put them up November so that San Bruno can vote on this. And those are my words. I know that Sandra wants to speak as well, so we raised our hand, but it's for two of We'll let the time, unless you want to recalibrate.
We can restart it.
Thanks.
So now Sandra, please.
Okay, hi. Yeah, thank you all for having this conversation. This is really just wonderful. We've been talking about this for too many years. And I just want to just remind you where we are at in the Bay Area. We are right next to the San Francisco airport and I bring this up every single time. If somebody wants to take advantage of an opportunity of getting a dispensary, what is better than close to an airport? It's your very first stop. You get off the plane, you get what you need and you move on. And maybe you just hang out and have dinner or lunch downtown. But the important thing is, is just making it available to residents. But the important thing is, is just making it available to residents, that's the most important thing, just to have a little humanity. It, we shouldn't have to leave our cities, veterans shouldn't have to leave our city, handicapped people shouldn't have to leave our city and take our tax money elsewhere. Make sure we can order online, but a lot of people don't want people knocking on their door. A lot of people, like myself, wanna go to the dispensary, see the product, and have a consultation with the people working there. So it, it's just overdue, it's nonsensical, cannabis has been deemed an essential product, a legal essential product, and in San Bruno, we're being denied something is essential in, in the other areas. So yeah, put it on the ballot, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands up, Melissa?
Not that I see, just one moment. Fortunately, I have to. Yes, we do have one more. Evelyn, I'm going to bring Evelyn into the meeting, just one moment. It takes a second.
Melissa, I see two, just as an FYI.
Yes, Aros Harmon just also raised his hand, we'll start with Evelyn.
Hello, can you all hear me?
A little louder, please.
Hello?
Oh, perfect.
Can you all hear me? Okay. Thank you. Do I start now, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Hi, thank you, city council, mayor, vice mayor, council members for letting me speak. On this topic of cannabis, I wanted to really focus on what's, kinda link it with what's happening with COVID right now. I know Dr. Albert Rizzo, a pulmonary, pulmonary doctor and chief medical officer of the American Lung Association, explained on CNN recently why occasional marijuana smoking can increase a person's risk of suffering severe complications from COVID nineteen. I do wanna link that up, because a lot of people aren't understanding, because a lot of people understand that COVID nineteen is a respiratory disease and infection and viral things going on. But also that if you do start smoking or have like e-cigarettes and cannabis, especially with THC, you do increase your risk of catching COVID nineteen. Also, I wanna talk about the youth component when it comes to cannabis products, we do know that they are in schools nowadays through either the vape pen-like paraphernalia. But also that if it is more likely to be in the community, say a store, you're gonna have a higher likelihood of people using fake ID cards to get in and buy THC products. I'm not saying that adults shouldn't have their rights to buy cannabis products because it is legal in the state of California, however, I think something for the council members to think about is prevention measures in terms of how you can protect youth from actually accessing it earlier at a younger age, because we know the brain isn't fully developed until, on average, the age of twenty-five. And THC has been proven in studies that it can affect brain development. That being said, during the shelter in place order that's happening right now, a lot of people are dealing with secondhand smoke. This includes not just from cigarette smoke, but also marijuana smoke, and it can actually be affecting a lot of people in multi-unit housing. Especially for people who already have pre-existing, pre-existing conditions like asthma or like bloodborne diseases where they have a deficiency in their blood that actually goes for the oxygen, to carry oxygen throughout their body. And that's what I wanted to talk about. And also that bringing in certain cannabis businesses, definitely, we've seen disproportionate amount of cannabis businesses being open in more low-income areas, so another thing for y'all to think about, if you are thinking about zoning in the downtown area. And that bringing in a business like cannabis stores, think about what type of products you want to allow to be sold in your city. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
One moment. I have to jump back and forth. Okay, the next speaker is Aros Harmon. Just one moment. Aros, are you there?
Hi, this, this is actually Plymouth Ansberg speaking, what we're logged in from Aros's computer. No worries. So I, I think, I think we decided that, or council decided that we were gonna break up the commentary on these different items, but in the interest of time, since it's already like after ten, I was gonna try and just comment on the measures in general, specifically on the issue of cannabis dispensaries. It seems like this is gonna be a relatively simple measure to come up with and put on the ballot, and since it sounds like we're sort of budget constrained in terms of how much time and, and time is money that, that staff has, I think that this would be one of the measures to, to focus on for this year. I don't, I don't feel like speaking about whether I personally am in favor of dispensaries or not is, is relevant, because what we're really talking about is creating the ballot measure, I think that's a good idea. There's a couple of other items on there that seem to me like they're not a lot more complicated, I'm definitely in favor of going forward with something like a charter city at some point, but I think there's gonna be a lot of details to work out about, about what actually to put on the ballot, and that might be something where we could start talking about it, but that's probably gonna need to be put off until another time. There's a number of other measures that I don't really know the details about because we haven't spoken about yet, them yet, but I just, my general message is, you know, prioritize putting things on the ballot this year that are simple and straightforward and leave more complicated things to later. Thanks.
Thank you.
One second. Nope, I do, I do not see any other, well, I don't see any hands up, no.
Marty, you have your hand up?
Oh, is it still up?
I see it.
I, I'm done. I, I, other than, I guess a little repetitive that having this first council to agendize the subject with the intent that if it, if it's, if it's doable, that that we should put it on the ballot. But we have to hear from staff, you know, like, like council member Salazar said, you know, what's the capacity? And we don't need to put all seven, you know, that was kinda the whole idea of the prioritization meeting that we were gonna have earlier that kinda got bounced around due to COVID, that we weren't able to talk about it, so this is probably the highest priority. And probably get, get, will give you the, the easiest perhaps, maybe, because other cities are, have already done it. And the, the biggest return that you, we would get in our financial crisis, so is that good enough, Mr. Mayor, to have a, to have a study session with the intent to hear back from staff about what it would take to put it on the ballot and how much time they think it would be necessary?
Well, I think that, you know, we're all last speaker too, is that that's kinda why I wanna go through all these things, because if it was truly for the ballot, then can we really do all eight or nine? Probably not. And then we'll be realistic, so then the council will prioritize. Now granted, Tuesday, we're meeting, I believe it's been confirmed for a study session to discuss the priority. So that would help us, unless, you know, there's interest, staff is aware of it, we can bring it up in the strategic studying unless the manager doesn't want that, because obviously there's a cost involved. Obviously, there's a time element involved, and I think those need to be attributed too, and then the prioritization of it, just as, as was spoken, as you just said too. Like the charter city, that is probably a very complicated matter.
Yeah, it is, it is.
So that's kinda why I wanted to go through all these and then
Okay, no, it's fair.
We can give staff if, if we're wanting to see, you know, study session and or ballot. And, but like you said, we're meeting Tuesday, I believe. So I think, I think staffs heard us about cannabis, I think they, they know we were minimal on a study session, we needed to know about time, more factual data, I think is what I'm hearing. And rolling that, I've, I've heard from some council that that might be a prioritization of putting it up close to, you know, the top. So unless I've heard differently, and then we can re-bring up maybe at the twenty-first, you know, those prioritizations. So are we okay to move on to fireworks?
Well, so, I'm sorry, this is just maybe a clarification on the process, but, but I wanna make sure that this doesn't get, actually, any of the items tonight, this is really process question, gets shovel, gets kind of dug into the priority meeting, which has hun- like hundreds of things on there. I, I, my understanding was the purpose of tonight was to focus on either ordinances or ballot measures, specifically, more specifically ballot measures, so that we do say as a, as a council, that we are setting this as a priority right now, we're not waiting until another meeting to then set priorities and make this one of many other priorities. And so if, based on the email that I saw, it was that if the council agrees and there is agreement amongst the council, the next step isn't to go to priorities meeting, it's to have staff come back with information as to whether, whether to agendize it. And so that, that's what I wanna just be very clear about, because otherwise, I feel like we could have just saved this information, this whole meeting for the priority setting meeting.
No, but on, on these items, what's going to be, but they've already heard about a study session, you've already heard, I think at least from majority of the council, they wanna do this forward for a study session. Some have a priority that they wanted on this November, but we still need staff to bring it back, yes. But I think we need to incorporate what we have here with what they're doing Tuesday as well, right, and we're gonna balance it. But some things are gonna rise to the top and need to be top priority, some things, like if it's a charter thing, maybe that's not the first thing that we're gonna deal with this year.
So the, so the council right now is saying the majority want this to go back to staff to research and to bring back to us, my understanding was gonna be within one or two meetings with some research, and then a vote as to whether to put places on the ballot or not. That was, that was my recollection.
Let, let's check with the city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. Manager?
All right, I'm off mute. Yes, really close to what council member Mason said, with one caveat. And so tonight's meeting is structured for the city council to talk about ideas for things that could potentially be put on the ballot. Staff will return within one to two meetings with a, essentially a level of effort analysis and likely additional questions. Because right now, we have an idea and all of these have a number of policy considerations. And we, we, very likely for cannabis, will come back with some initial information and a request for clarity on what type of cannabis businesses and categories does the council want staff to do further re- research into. And then we will launch into that work with the goal of bringing you back everything you need to put on the ballot. And for some of the items, we may have additional study sessions in April or May or June as we tackle the various policy considerations and develop the ballot language. And so we'll have various check-ins, but tonight, as I say, what are you guys interested in potentially having staff prioritize for the November twenty ballot? And then we'll return with a level of effort analysis and then step through all the other policy considerations.
And I'm just being a little more aggressive with this one because given that the county is seeing a potential increase in COVID nineteen, I believe at the end of May is what the Seminole County Health Officer mentioned. We may be in shelter in place for long, for a little bit longer, and other cities will also be seeking ways to generate revenue. And so if we can get it into this ballot measure, we may single ourselves out in a way that other cities may be catching up with us at a later time, I don't, I don't know that, but I wanna throw that out there. And I also just didn't wanna move on without acknowledging Evelyn's comment. You know, I understand everything that Evelyn said, and I, I just wanna make sure that when the city does its research, that some of the comments that she brought up are addressed as well. Specifically, I would definitely be interested around any statistics relating to any dispensaries around children, low-income communities, and what the impacts have been on those. I think that those are all very valid concerns that I would also like to hear about. Thank you.
Are we good to go on to fireworks? Marty? Marty? You're on mute.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Into another controversial subject, right? Firework sales were last approved by sixty-five percent of the voters in two thousand and five. I enjoy safe and sane fireworks, more now with my young son than ever. We gather with neighboring friends and responsibly like them. I am a member of a couple organizations that sell fireworks. I understand the cost benefit that our organizations have in, in raising a lot of money in a short amount of time. Yet I'm also aware that I've heard numerous complaints about the noise and fire safety involved with fireworks. So I think fifteen years is a pretty decent amount of time to check in back with our residents, and it, it, this is not a this isn't as high as a priority, but it's still important that, that if, if it could be quickly put together, that we get a check-in with our residents and find out if, do we, do we still want to be in the fireworks business as, as a community? So to have a study session on that, to look into the possibility of putting on the ballot, depending on capacity of staff and interest. So that's the reason why I, I have it here, to have a study session on that.
It's a study session, but as you said, it's not the top priority.
Clearly, I think based on where we are financially, the cannabis probably is the biggest bang of the buck that could happen. However, I don't wanna diminish the concerns that some of our residents have about the, the noise and their, their fear of, of a fire from, from
I appreciate, but I just, I'm, I'm thinking of how many, so that's potentially up to two as far as priorities. Okay, any comments from council? Laura? Then Michael.
So first of all, we're, we're kind of, we didn't really figure out how we would go through this list, so I'm just wondering if maybe council member Medina can go through these lists. Otherwise, I feel like we're gonna be here till midnight, having a discussion on all these items. But I, I think what this list really is, is what on here he can quickly hit on, on his high level, and then allow all the council members to give their feedback and what they wanna see come, go forward on the ballot for, for this year. Because nothing else is a priority to have discussion tonight. Because for me personally, until I see all the issues that we wanna address in the city, it's hard for me to make a decision. It's hard for me to vote on any one item until I see our list of priorities for this year. And there are far and many, and so, you know, revenues, it would be a number one for me.
Uh, Michael?
I, I like what Laura just said, and I agree, maybe we should just, you know, take in the whole thing and then decide which, which things to move forward on. But I, I was gonna actually ask Marty a question in terms of what he would like to see, what information he would like to see come back in a study session. Because I, I think this one could be an easy one to get on a ballot, where if it's just a question that says does the city of San Bruno continue to allow fireworks, may not require a lot of staff time, and we've already, we've already placed the same item on a ballot before. We just dust off the language from the last one and put it back out there, that could be an easy one. So so in terms of asking for a study session, I would just be curious, you know, are there specific data points that, that would help you in, in formulating whether or not to move it forward? Or if it's, if it's a no-brainer, can we just say, yeah, let's just, you know, get it on there as long as A, it's not gonna cost too much, and B, it's not gonna take too much staff time?
Yeah, go please.
Right, so, so I, I believe we would need our city attorney to help out a little bit there, since we do have something that was approved by the voters. We would need, we, we would need their approval to, to change it, and to change it would be basically outlawing it. So it would probably be easier to just do that, but I'll leave it at that, and I don't know if the city attorney, if you can please correct me on any of that.
No, I, I mean, I think there's a, could be a general view that, that some of these ballot measures are, are easy and some of them are hard. And it actually turns out that even if other cities have done them and we have forums to look at, it turns out that that really doesn't change the level of effort required on a, on a staff basis. And the reason for that is because we can't just copy an ordinance and say, well, here, take this one, let's put it on the ballot. The question always will be from the city council, what is it? What does that really mean? That's going to be on the ballot, and you know, for cannabis, you have zoning, you have number, you have what's That's going to be on the ballot. And, you know, for cannabis, you have zoning, you have number, you have what's the tax rate? How is it going to be taxed? All kinds of details that are specific to, you know, to, to the city of San Bruno and to the city council. So it might seem simple or somebody might say, oh, well, this is an easy one. But actually each ballot measure does have a certain amount of complexity. For fireworks and for many of the other ones, you also want to ask yourself, are we really just doing an advisory measure? Or are we asking the public to vote on something? And if they're asking, we're asking them to vote on something, what are we asking them to vote on? And what are those implications? So for fireworks, for example, we could say, shall this ordinance be repealed? Or you could say, I mean, that's, that's the alternative because we already have an ordinance allowing it. So if you want to put it in front of the voters, you're not going to ask them, should we keep it the way it is? It already is the way it is. You're going to ask them, do you want to repeal it? So these are the sorts of questions that, you know, we have to give a lot of thought to and make sure that ballot measures are clear so the voters know what they're, what they're voting on.
So there are no easy answers. Thank you.
Well, we'll work on whatever you ask us to, but these, these are really quite time-consuming and complicated things, you know, to, to work on and it, it will displace other priorities. I'm virtually certain we can't come back to you by the next meeting with a report on, on cannabis. The staff reports are due tomorrow on that. So we're unlikely, I think, to, to be able to do that. And that's also a cross-departmental effort. So we have myself, we have community development, we have finance, we have police. And all of those departments collaborated the last time the cannabis ordinance went to the city council and the city council was adopted. You know, the staff and the prior council did a great deal of work at that time and understanding it's a different council on looking at all of those issues and doing a, you know, really deep level of analysis on, on that in a multi-departmental effort. And so we would be needing to do the same thing for, for cannabis and partly for fireworks because that also involves police and fire.
Alright.
As well as finance. So they're, they're complicated. We're happy to work on them, but I, I wouldn't want anyone to underestimate the, the level of staff time that's required for these ballot measures.
You're muted, Linda.
And me, myself? Am I still muted? Okay. I would just be curious to know, because I, I think that fireworks of all the priorities is one, in my opinion, that can wait. I'd like to know more information about the issue at hand. If it's a safety issue, how many accidents or how many safety issues have occurred in the last five years? I'd like to know enforcement, so how many arrests were made, how many illegal fireworks have been confiscated? Before we go down a path of just even putting it on the ballot, what is, what is the true concern there? And I, I think that's one, and just in my opinion, that can wait as far as priorities go. I'll respect the council. If the council seems to want to move forward, I will, you know, respect that and support it. But I do think that as far as priorities go, I don't have enough information on this to really make a determination on one way or the other.
Okay. Anything else, council? Send your hands. So, you know, I'm also, something that Laura had said too, this is why I kind of wanted to hear everything because see, that was my concern is we're taking each one and I know when we went past midnight another time, that was not well received. So I want to be mindful of time and we're going to have every, we're going to have speakers on everything. So I'm going to ask again, Marty, is it possible just to go through the list?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I have got another hand. Laura? Laura?
Go ahead, Laura.
There you go.
Um, thank you. I prefer that Marty goes to the list.
Michael?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Marty.
Sorry, guys. I, I know it's getting late, but I do just want to say, I think in the spirit of allowing people to have comment, I, I don't know about, I, I don't think the, the rest of them are going to be that long, just from what I'm seeing, but I do want to make sure we give people an opportunity to comment.
Yes, they'll, they'll have the opportunity once Marty's done to, to comment.
Good?
Yes, please.
Okay, alright. I'll make it quick.
Appreciate it.
Rotational mayor, San Bruno is the only city in San Mateo County that elects a mayor. All of the other nineteen cities rotate. Based on my council experience, San Bruno, San Bruno would benefit with each council member having their turn as mayor. I believe it would create a more collaborative environment. Since the city is pursuing district elections, it, it's timely to ask the voters if they think having them elected mayor is still their preference. I'm in no rush to do this, so we're going to have districts figured out by twenty twenty-two. So having a, having a study session at some point in the future to talk about it. It doesn't have to happen anytime soon.
Next charter, charter city?
Charter city. This takes a long time, having a study session on it. There's, San Bruno is a general law city. This was one of the revenue topics discussed in the April twenty eighteen meeting. The California Constitution provides charter cities with a variety of tools to construct local policy and address local concerns and probably most importantly, to, to raise revenue. Of the four hundred and eighty-two cities in California, a hundred and twenty of them are charter cities. At some point in the future, having a study session to look into it. Since I believe it's a pretty comprehensive, timely process and I'll leave it at that. Fire districts, another, another item discussed in the April twenty eighteen study session where the council was advised of an option to create a special district for fire mitigation. San Bruno is blessed with open spaces, but these spaces have liabilities and have been identified, identified in fire mitigation studies, which costs a lot of money to take care of. Having a fire mitigation district would provide a guaranteed revenue source to assist in properly maintaining these open spaces. These funds could not be used for any other purpose. That's going to take time as well, kind of like stormwater thing that's kind of aligned. So going from there later on, I'm alright with that. Having the discussion at some time, some point is important. Number six is the hotel tax, which staff has already went ahead and they're moving forward with looking at increasing the T O T. I wasn't informed, or I wasn't contacted on the survey that was conducted, but I, I, it's my understanding that the public was contacted for that survey. Those are the majority of my
Term limits.
Excuse me?
You have term limit?
Yeah, term, term limits. Basically, this is a, an acknowledgement of this past election and, and, and listening to council member Mason's call for term limit, term limits. I appreciate the interest and I, and I'm in favor of this topic agendized so we can openly discuss it. It's, it's not a high priority for me, so I think with the time that we have for twenty, for twenty twenty, that this would be something that I'm willing to allow to not take a staff's time.
And, and thank you, Marty. Appreciate it. If you don't mind, just on the charter, I'd like to ask the city manager because that was a revenue aspect. And I know it, it, it kind of generates off the estate transfer tax. So, city manager, you have anything to add specifically to that or the complexity or?
Sure. I think council member Medina was absolutely right. A charter city is a very, very significant endeavor to go through all of the various ideas and policy options before the city council. When this was talked about before, it was also talked about as a potential revenue item because you have the ability as a charter city to charge a real estate transfer tax. And that's a tax on the sale of real estate, not just homes, but also commercial property, all property. And so when we talk about what would have the most significant revenue impact of the ideas, it's actually the, a real estate transfer tax vis a vis a charter, being a charter city. Now, it is possible to become a charter city and have that be the main policy decision that the city council is looking at vis a vis a charter city. There are some other decisions that have to be made. I think the challenge with that is once you start talking, talking about a charter city, you go very, very broad. And so if the council could limit themselves to real estate transfer tax, that, that could be potentially one thing. But once you start talking about a charter cities, it, it likely involves much, much more. That's why it came up before, mainly as a significant revenue generator.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Comments from council and Melissa, is there anybody from, if you can check if public?
There is not. Actually, just now, I just got one. Terry Chavez, do you want her, do you want to allow speaker now or?
Yes, please, in case. Turn in.
Okay, Terry, just one moment. I am unmuting you. Terry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you guys. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You guys are the diehards with these late night meetings. My hat goes off to you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Those are all important topics. And I'm really grateful and glad to hear that many of the topics will probably go to the voters to, to decide. I think that's, that's a great stance to take. I just wanted to comment on term limits because often we have two-year term limits or four-year term, I'm sorry, not term limits, sorry. Often we have a position, a government position that, which is a two-year limit, a two-year term or a four-year term. But every time that, that the person is termed, every time the term ends, they're either going to be, if they choose to run again, then they will be, they could be reelected or they could not be reelected. So my, in my, in my opinion, if, if you're elected to a four-year term, every four years, it's kind of like your term, it's not a term limit, but every four years, you're letting the, the voters decide, do you want to have this person reelected or do you not want to have them reelected? So I actually feel like we should just let the voters continue to, to, to elect our electeds, every, whether it's a four-year term for city council or in school board, or whether, whether it's a two-year term for the mayor or whatever it is. I'm just kind of wondering, what do other cities do in San Mateo County? Do they have term limits for their city councils? So I, I was just interested in that as well. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you for staying up with us. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, any other speakers? Melissa?
I'm sorry, I see one more. There is one speaker, Nicole Fernandez. Just one moment, I'm bringing her in.
Thank you.
Nicole, can you hear us?
This is actually Alex. I was using somebody, Alex, I'm using someone else's Zoom account at the moment. Mine was giving issues. This is a little strange, probably should have fixed that.
It's alright.
My public comment, just very briefly, well, first off, thank you very much for being here this, being here this late. You guys, as Terry said, you guys are the diehards. I just wanted to make a quick comment on the cannabis dispensary. I probably could have waited. I'm sorry, Melissa, I sent her a late email. City clerk. I am also in favor of bringing it to the November ballot. I think I've spoken publicly on my support of a cannabis dispensary in San Bruno before. Although I am in support of bringing it to the voters. I do believe however, if, I, I, if the city is interested in researching this as well in their study session, that it might be in the city's interest to look on how to approve this or how to regulate it and administer it to get ahead of a potential ballot measure. In, in, in the idea that it provides more flexibility to the city, to the council, to readjust whatever to, to essentially not be tied down to what is in the ballot measure. I guess it depends on how the language of the ballot measure is written. I just think it's in the city's interest to do so as it gives you the most flexibility. That being said, I, I would still support it going to the November ballot, just an idea. And Nicole, if you're watching this somewhere, please forgive me for using your account. Sorry.
Thank you, Alex. Any, any other speaker?
Nope.
Commenter, Linda?
So I'm sorry, I want to just make sure that our process is really clear. Are we going item by item and then getting consensus from the council? Because that was one of the issues that had been previously brought up and I just want the record and the minutes to be very clear on where, on where we are. Or are we having a discussion right now on all the items?
Discussion on all the items that Marty has gone through. Well, I think we covered cannabis, so I don't know that we need to go back over that one. But from fireworks to term limits.
Okay, great. So then I have a couple of comments. So for a charter city, I, I definitely support the charter city. I would ask council for information as to whether there's any benefit and whether it's possible to prioritize that for this, for this year. I, I do understand and I heard city manager Grogan, but the reason I think this also may be an immediate need is because of the districting. And so will the charter city impact the choices for districting? Would it give us more choices in the future? And my understanding is that yes, it will from what I've read. But I do think it would be beneficial to have a fully informed decision on that. And also as far as development goes, I know that in reading the San Mateo case that came out recently, there was a decision made and the difference between San Mateo County and San Bruno in many ways is that San Mateo, not county, the city of San Bruno was that they were charter cities. So I'd also like to know what the impact of becoming a charter city would be in development, if any. But if there's an immediate need, then we really should be trying to prioritize that this year and, and I would leave that to council. So it's just some questions that I would have for staff, which it would be, what are the benefits to becoming a charter city, financial development and legal? Meaning, when I say legal, I mean, are there additional immunities or protections for being a charter city? Are there any benefits to being self-insured as well when I talk about legal risk? What are the potential adverse impacts to becoming a charter city? Also financial development and legal. And what would be the process for becoming a charter city should the council select that path forward? That's regarding charter city. For rotating mayor, San Bruno is the only city in San Mateo County who elects their mayor. Are there any benefits to remaining as we are or to transitioning to a rotating mayor model? Should San Bruno move towards district elections, are there any benefits to retaining a mayor that is elected at large? Prior to the districting, I actually fully supported the rotational mayor. And now with the districting, I am curious to know whether there are benefits to having an elected mayor. It would be helpful to know from other cities which have elected mayors, my understanding it's just us, but I would like that confirmed, which have switched over to district elections and maintain their, their, you know, rotational mayor. And what is the cost to the city of San Bruno to maintain a separate ballot for the mayor? So we elect a mayor every two years. Do we pay an extra charge to have that on the ballot? And what is that cost to the city of San Bruno? Term limits? So we do not have term limits in San Bruno, but the President of the United States has term limits. The state senator has term limits. Many city councils in the San Mateo County have term limits. Our supervisors have term limits. Our city council is elected to four-year terms and our mayor is elected to two-year terms. I think the key that a lot of the public misses is the word limit. We have terms, but we don't limit how many times that you can be in your term. The amount of time in office if elected is indefinite. As long as you continue being elected, you may continue to serve. It is most efficient to allow individuals to continue running when, one, we are aware that incumbents have advantages that include financial contributions, endorsements, because relationships have already been established. And a name, they have name recognition that is very hard to come up against and it's hard to replace statistically. All of these make it difficult to attract new candidates who are interested in government and who want to serve their community. Various city councils require rotating out after a certain number of years. I believe Redwood City is after sixteen years, you can rotate out. But then you have to, then you can run again, but you do have to rotate out. Various city councils require the rotating out of the cities in the peninsula. The questions I would have is which have term limits? What are those term limits? Can an individual who's been termed out run again? And what are the drawbacks and benefits to this model? And what are the drawbacks and benefits to this model? I do think that this is really an equity issue. A lot of cities do already establish term limits, and a lot of our higher officials have term limits as well. So I'm hoping that the council will support at the, at a very minimum, looking into term limits for our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Other comments from council? Laura?
I would just like to ask Linda if she could proceed with her two items that we as a council as a whole can decide on all items, which are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight items left, eliminating the hotel tax, that we can then decide which we would like to move forward.
Well, and I think, and Linda had term limits and she had cannabis and rotational. So if Linda, fair, I think you've had commentary on that. You also had local purchasing and you had campaign finance.
Okay, sure. So local purchasing, I just want to state that I apologize if it was my, my error or it was, it may have been interpreted wrong, but these two don't need to be on the ballot. These are items that we can, that I would actually like to be immediate. But I don't believe they need to be on the ballot. I believe their ordinance is. So the local purchasing policy is a non-ballot initiative. San Bruno does not require its city to purchase locally. For example, there's no requirement that the city of San Bruno first identify San Bruno restaurants to purchase food before going to another city. Thus, San Bruno can purchase from anywhere, from any event, including senior center lunches, dinners, public meetings, and our employee events. This also includes any of our emergency workers who can go to grocery stores and Trader Joe's and Millbury and support other grocery stores that are not providing any tax revenue for the city. While a broader local purchasing policy may be asked for at a later time, I wanted to start with a request for information on the benefits or drawbacks to any local purchasing policy for food, including restaurants and groceries. This request is not meant to lead to a budget initiative, but instead a policy that I would hope my fellow council members will support, especially at this very difficult time in our history when businesses are suffering. So that's the local purchasing policy. And then for the San Bruno campaign finance reform, this past election cycle, my first, was an insider view of money in politics. After reviewing years of campaign spending, the average San Bruno election cost between $7,000 and $10,000 per candidate. Some years even less when candidates ran unopposed. In this last election cycle, the candidates combined spent approximately $125,000, with one candidate spending over $75,000. What are the benefits and what are the drawbacks to an initiative such as campaign finance reform? Cities have found various ways to address the concerns of money in politics. In Belmont, for example, the city council passed an ordinance limiting financial contributions years ago. Their ordinance begins as follows. "It is the intent of the city council, the city of Belmont, in enacting this chapter to place realistic and enforceable limits on the amount which may be contributed to political campaigns in municipal elections for the purpose of preventing potential improper or undue influence over elected officials by campaign contributions, to encourage grassroots campaigning, and to ensure against election victories based primarily on the amount expended on campaigns." The ordinance goes on to state that accumulated contributions from anonymous sources may not exceed $250 in the calendar year, and that no person should accept any contribution of $100 without obtaining the name, address, occupation, and employer's name of the person making the contribution. Furthermore, under the direction of Assemblyman Kevin Mullin, the state of California has new rules and regulations that will be implemented shortly. However, these limitations for a city the size of San Bruno are still high. This election cycle, we have three of our five seats up for election. Provided our last election spending and campaigning, this one is likely to be charged as well. This council has the ability to show the public that campaign seats are not meant to cost the same amount of money that the city could fund a full-time employee that is so desperately needed. Further, we should all want to support this request to direct staff for more information so that we can align ourselves with cities that have already made intentional efforts to reassure the public that San Bruno City Council and mayoral seats are not for sale. Being a first-time candidate to two incumbents, one that had been in office for 24 years with every endorsement possible, and another candidate who had name recognition and money, was really difficult. I want to note that this is not about the candidates, not their moral characters, not whether they were qualified to be in office. This is really about whether money should be in politics. This is about how much money we want in our local politics. Is this what we want for our elections? The residents of San Bruno overwhelmingly said no. And I hope we all heard that. Running for office and knocking on so many doors truly made me wonder if San Bruno is still invested in the American dream that is invested in democracy. I cannot tell you how many homes I knocked on that would say, good luck, but you won't win. San Bruno always elects the same people and the same families or whoever those families support. Had San Bruno become an oligarchy? While I am here to the shock of many, I am here because I, with so many others, worked day and night, including myself, to actually meet our neighbors by going door to door. All of the items before you tonight are a result of questions asked or requested by individuals whose doors I knocked on. While I may not ultimately support all of the initiatives, the public has the right to be represented by individuals who will listen to all of their concerns and put them to action every year, not just during election years. These items here tonight are all of your constituent requests. Moving towards district elections was supported by the three council members present today. All four of you supported the intent to move to district elections in 2022. District elections are intended to ensure representation of all groups, a better chance of being represented on the city council. That vote would be counterintuitive if this item is not supported tonight. By limiting the amount of money one can spend on a campaign, we are intentionally making all candidates meet their neighbors and constituents instead of spending time raising money in a city that so desperately needs it and replacing the human contact with mailers and campaign fundraisers. I wholeheartedly support a directive to ask staff to provide us with more information and note that this would not be a ballot measure, but instead an ordinance and tonight's vote will allow staff the time necessary to research this area and provide us with quality data prior to making a decision to approve an ordinance. I support beginning this process immediately so that it impacts this year's election as we are entering an election year and hope all of my fellow council members support this request that other cities have already adopted and the state has already taken action on. It is our turn to lead our city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, you have your hand up?
I guess I am way confused because Linda, this is not a time to talk about items that we don't want to bring forward to an agenda, I'm sorry, to the ballot this year. I appreciate your passion, I appreciate your issues, but this is not the time to have this discussion. I think Jevon made it very clear in the beginning of this agenda item that said, what items on this list that Marty has brought forward and you've brought forward to bring to the ballot for 2020? And to get a jumpstart for staff to do it, start working on it today. And as our attorney nicely said, all these requests take a lot of time and effort. And I feel like you coming forward tonight with your prepared speech says to me, well, I'm not prepared for my items, because my items are just as important as yours. And we have a time and a place for that, and that is at next week's goal-setting session. And not at the time to actually go into in-depth about your issues, and I get where you're coming from. But like, we've got to put a list of things out there next week, figure out when we want to prioritize, and then talk further on it. But we could be here till 2:00 in the morning if each of us want to come forward with our passion and our issues. So I, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I hear you. But I think this agenda item tonight under council comments is simply, of these eight items, what does council agree to move forward to the ballot this year? And ask staff to please start working on it. I think it's the only thing we should be talking about right now. I think that's the most important thing. And, and frankly, there's so much on here. We've got to really decide what we want staff to work on with limited staff, with limited resources, and with limited funding. So we got to figure out together of these eight items. I think that's most important.
And I've been told from Melissa, we do have a member of the public who does want to speak. I'm going to pause in case they want to get offline and go back. So Melissa, can we? Take any speakers, please?
Yes, I did see that Stephen Seymour's hand was up, but then it, it's now since been lowered, so it's back up. Okay. Just one, just one moment.
This will be the opportunity for anybody from the public to comment. And then we're going to keep it at a council discussion after that.
Okay, just one moment while I bring. Okay, Stephen, can you hear us?
I can, I can, I can.
We can hear you.
I put my hand up, it was for some, one of the other things, because you guys were moving through the topics. But first of all, I think term limits is a good discussion to have. Local purchasing just makes sense. I mean, why shouldn't we support? In fact, I'm stunned that we're buying products from other cities when we should be keeping our tax dollars in San Bruno, because there are more than enough businesses here to support the needs. I'd also like to say that I was a little taken back by the conversation that just happened. Yes, it's late. It's 11:15. I'm still up, and I'm sure that others are watching this as well. And I think this conversation on campaign finance is a very important one. Because I do think that we should level the playing field. And so Linda, I want to thank you for bringing this forward in terms of a comment, in terms of a conversation. And I question whether or not, you know, what the motive is of pushing it further down the road. But I, I'm in favor of term limits, or at least the discussion thereof, because I want to know what the benefits are and what the, and what they aren't. I believe that we should be purchasing from our own vendors, those who are in San Bruno. We shouldn't be giving our tax dollars, I can't believe that the city would be giving tax dollars to other cities for goods that they could buy here. And I do think this campaign finance thing is something that's extremely important at, both at, at the national level, at the state level, at all levels in, in politics. So Linda, thank you very much for bringing it forward. And I'd like to see a conversation go forward so that we can, you know, maybe find a level playing field for anyone who wants to run for office in the future. And then Sandra has something to say, so I don't know if you want to reset the clock, or she'll just use what time we have left, or plus some.
Hello, this is Sandra.
Go ahead, Sandra.
It's late, but not late enough for such important topics. I would go to 3:00 in the morning. These are the issues that were brought up that Linda's talking about by thousands of residents. We all heard them. Linda walked out there, Marty, we all did. I think she should be applauded for taking the time to present this. I don't think she should be scolded and demeaned for it. I just, I mean, why would you at any time not say, yeah, we should know about finances when people are running for office? We should know possible motives for running for office? And I just, I just don't understand why you wouldn't want that. Laura, I'm just, I just don't understand that. If you could just give me your reasoning behind that, why this, I just don't understand. I'm done.
Okay. Thank you, Sandra. Is there any other folks? Melissa?
Yes, I do see that Arus Harmon has his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead and hear from Arus or Plymouth, whoever it is.
Hi. Yeah, this is actually Plymouth again. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi. So like relatively quickly, just on, on the issue of term limits specifically, I, I, I really appreciate Linda's passion and all of the comments about, you know, the effort that it took for her to, you know, unseat a long-term, a long-serving council member. I think it should take that level of effort to unseat somebody. I think that existing, like, experience and long-term experience is valuable, and that, you know, existing council members who are doing a good job should be given the benefit of the doubt that they, you know, are going to continue to do a good job. And simply rotating in new people, not because those people have done anything wrong and are not expressing the will of the voters, is really, it is not really good for democracy. And you end up with this kind of like rotating door effect where, you know, people don't have a large amount of experience. And I hope that Linda continues to do a great job. And if she does, that the voters will also continue to elect her for, for many years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Melissa?
No.
Okay. So at this point, we're going to keep it now just to council? And I see Laura, your hand is up?
So just to clarify, and I appreciate the public comments, I don't think that any of Linda's priorities are not important. That's not my point. And I think that they are important. I just think that we as a council are given an opportunity at a strategic setting to bring our issues forward. And then as a council, at that point, to discuss all of them. For example, development in San Bruno. We need to educate the community about development. We just can't have a Mills Park development come forward where somebody's got to hear about this development, attending a party in Pacifica. So there's a list of things that I have, that I've been holding off, that I've been wanting to come forward to. I brought them to my, our meeting last year, but we can only tackle so many. So I just think that Linda, your items need to be added to our list. We as a council come forward. We together figure out a plan to move forward. But tonight was only about items we want to be brought forward to the ballot for 2020. And I think anything else should not have been brought forward tonight to have that discussion. So maybe it's just a matter of communication that was missed, because that's what was my understanding. My understanding was simply that this agenda item is only to discuss those things you want to put on the 2020 ballot. Local purchasing? I mean, I mean, I think you can have a 10-minute conversation with the city manager about the importance of that. And I think that could be changed. If, if, if there is, in fact, things that are happening in the city where they're purchasing things, and they could be purchasing in San Bruno. But there are a lot of details that go behind why somebody purchases something in one city versus another city. Those, again, not to say that those are not important issues. It just has to be prioritized amongst all the other things that are already out there and that we all have on our list as well.
Michael, did you have anything, or Marty?
Nothing else really to add, other than, you know, my, my priorities are and will continue to be the city's fiscal stability. And those are the items that I will prioritize bringing forward. And anything else, political, you know, agendas, whatever, I'm not really interested in promoting any of that at this point. I really think we need to focus on our finances. So that's, that's it.
Linda?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the council is a policymaking board. And so I'm looking at the email right now that was sent to us with instructions. And I wanted to be clear that I did follow the instructions. I think the lack of interpretation was that these were all ballot items. And like I said, I don't know. I'll have to look at my email. I'm looking at the email that was sent from staff directing us. So I don't know where the confusion occurred, but I do believe that as a policymaking board, we should be initiating policies. And I think these two are very important policies, campaign finance reform in the immediate future that will impact our campaign in November of this year. And as far as the local purchasing, we all know that there's money that's being expended in outside facilities outside of San Bruno on a regular basis. So while a conversation with the city manager has been had, I think as a policymaking board, it's our responsibility to look out for the best interests of San Bruno, which may include initiating and approving a policy. So I know it's late, but I don't believe that the instruction was vague. I believe that what I prepared, and I prepared what I did out of respect for all of you and out of respect for the public, to be clear that this is not just some whim, this is not, these are really important matters that have been brought up over and over by the public. And I think that it's respectful to prepare before bringing an item up to the council. So I just wanted to bring that forth.
Marty?
I just wanted to chime in on, this is the first time we've tried to do something like this about agendaizing topics. And, okay, we learn from it. It is a little late, and that, and that's, and that's fine, too. So I haven't commented on the local purchases, and I do see Laura's point that at some point, at the, at the priority-setting meetings, that's where that would fit best. And I do still want to. Um, and I do still want to say I do, I am in favor of that. I think it's kind of like a common sense that we would want our expenditures to remain in San Bruno as much as possible. However, it's not always necessary, right? And it's a little surprising that there is no policy, but, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that at our strategic, strategic goal city, um, next week. So, um, it's timely, we got a preview of it. Um, um, I'm thankful for everybody for, for, for listening, and I'm, I'm ready to see what the council is deciding we should, uh, move forward with. Thank you.
Laura, you have your hand up, was that from before, or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm ready to move forward myself.
Okay, um, so, well, I'm gonna say something, since I've, I've been patient, too. Um, I think we've, we've, we've gone over the cannabis, I, I believe. You know, on some of the items, uh, two, I think the hotel tax, we've already talked about. You know, my, my first inclination on term limits is that, um, you have three people that sit on this body today that, uh, defeated and comped. So, uh, it does happen, this is probably in, um, as far as people, the length of time serving, that has been the youngest, shall we say? I'm, I think I'm the oldest technically, but I've been youngest as far as years of service collectively, that has been for, for a few decades. Um, so I don't know that that's my top thing, the local purchasing. Um, I think that that is something that can be done at that level of a policy. Um, of cour- of course, I think we have to balance it in the sense of, do we, and that's a council and staff decision. If we can get it from here and spend thirty percent more than what we can get it for in South City, how do we balance that? I know the one item that was kind of raised was, uh, food purchasing for the senior program. Uh, and it, there is some purchasing that is done for the meal program that has to meet county nutritional, um, um, criterias and stuff like that. So, again, you have to balance, but you know, there should be, uh, an expectation of prioritization to that. Um, on, let's see, Charter City, I think everybody has, we just need more data. Uh, I think Linda, you would make some good points about trying to balance, where, where do we gain? What do we gain? Um, and is it, is it, is it worth that time going through? Um, something, just out of point of information on the rotational mayor, uh, Haplem Bay went to districts, and they will be having a directly elected mayor. So, um, we will not be the only ones, uh, if it continues. And, um, I think, you know, I can go on, but I know, um, I think, uh, on the campaign finance, I think that there's, off the top of my head, four cities in the county that have some type of limitations, uh, per individual contribution and/or organizational contribution. Um, usually, I know San Mateo, off the top of my head, is five hundred individual, a thousand dollar in organization. So, um, you know, is that something to discuss, potentially? But I think a strategic study session is, is best. So I'll, I'll stop at that, keep my comments short. Um, anything else from council? I mean, Marty, I, I, I think what, what was being asked for again is, you know, cannabis is something that we were seeing as a potential item that we want staff to go back. We want staff to see if this is something that is viable for November ballot, if that's the decision of the council. Um, I think, and correct me, the local purchasing and campaign finance could be something that maybe is discussed. Um, Linda can correct me at the Tuesday strategic meeting. Um, and then that leaves, uh, like the fireworks, and I know Marty, you had said, hey, some of these are, you know, hey, not, not an, a, immediate need of a prioritization, like right now for this November. Um, you know, so I'll, I'll take it from council. I mean, that's kind of the summaries I, I had heard. Charter City was not like this November. Fire District was not this November, rotational mayor was not this November. I'm just going by my, my checks here. Um, cannabis was something potentially for the 2020. Campaign finance, local purchasing, for Tuesday strategic meeting, um, other things. And then maybe we could just say, do we want to just let every council member go and say, what item, items do you think are a prioritization for this November that you want to see brought forward? That have gotten, you know, this is, this is where we're at, if that makes sense. Um, with that said, I'm gonna open it back up to council, so we can make that determination. Please. Uh, Laura? Oh, and then Marty.
Do you want to just go down each item, make it clear, and then we can just vote?
So, uh, what I would be saying is, I'm gonna, uh, give the item, and then, uh, a yes to me, to us, would mean for this 2020 ballot. Okay? Does that, is that fair, is that clear? I see a, a nodding okay, everybody? Go ahead, Marty.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, something that, um, if the charter city was specifically limited to the real estate transfer,
Good call.
Um, that seems like it could be a lot more doable in the time. Um, I just wanted to make sure that I heard it correctly, because if not, then, then it's a really wide subject. Is that correct? Is that, was that, uh, city manager Grogan said that, or was that?
That, that was, uh, you're, you're correct, it was the city manager. Here he is.
Yeah. Um, I think the question is, uh, if we are only looking at the transfer tax, that's one thing. I think, um, just by the questions that we heard from, uh, council member, uh, Mason, for her items, uh, that she would like information on, uh, on a charter, it's a very, very broad envelope, and, uh, it's a long conversation. And cities dedicate many, many months to that conversation of a charter, uh, city. And so, uh, while it would be a revenue item, if it is broad and expanded, uh, it's, it's likely something that you guys need time to go through, uh, and address all the various policy, uh, and legal issues. Um, and we're in the, we're in the midst of a lot right now. And so, um, I think that's a, a decision for council to make on, on what's appropriate, uh, for, uh, for staff to look into for November twenty twenty. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll come to you with a level of effort analysis, and then, uh, a lot of work will begin, um, as we're in the midst of dealing with, uh, the budgetary shortfall and the public health crisis. Um, but certainly, anything that council would like us to direct, to look into, we will do a level of effort analysis on. Um, uh, put aside other priorities and work on that.
Is that clear to that, Marty, or?
Yeah, if, if we went to, the charter has to be complete to cover the whole spectrum of items? Or could it be dealt with the first part of the, um, financial side and then be amended?
You know, actually, work has to be done to answer that question, uh, specifically.
Okay.
You can't just say we're a charter city and we're doing a transfer tax. There are other, uh, components of becoming a charter city. Uh, but there are, I mean, almost infinite policy decisions, uh, and sections of a charter.
All right.
That would be drafted.
So tell me straight, Doc, how much time do we really need? It's a lot of time, and it's not realistic to, to try to do it in November.
You know, honestly, every topic, uh, that has been talked about, uh, takes time for us to formally come back to you and tell you, um, whether we.
Right, right.
And, and so, uh, I know that a charter city will, uh, if the city council wanted to implement a, uh, real estate transfer tax, would raise revenue. Uh, but just judging by the conversation that you guys had tonight on just the, the concept of a charter, all of the various questions and policy considerations are gonna take a lot of time.
Okay. Are we ready to prioritize then?
Yep, uh, we have Linda's hand up.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that for the local purchasing and for the finance reform, that we're also gonna, um, taking action on that, and whether we want staff to come back to us with more information. And maybe, um, city attorney Deprano can step in, because I'm looking at the email that was sent with our instructions. And I do believe I followed the instructions to have a vote tonight as to whether to have staff look into this item, these items more.
So I, I, I don't know about the email, I'm not gonna take a position on that. I think it's up to the council, how they want to conduct their, uh, policymaking business, and whether they want to prioritize those things tonight, or wait until next Tuesday, uh, for, to, you know, to discuss the level of effort on the two ordinances that you suggested.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so what we'll do is, again, uh, um, what I'm gonna say on the last two that Linda, you just mentioned, we're gonna ask, because you're not talking about ballot, we're talking about, it's, I would say, council, you would answer in yes, to it go forward, to have something brought back now, or two, you would answer Tuesday. And that would be then bringing it up in the Tuesday strategic session. Is that fair?
That's fair.
All right, so let's start with cannabis. Um, I, I, we're not gonna do a motion in that, I'll just go through my, the, the pictures here. And that will be, a yes means twenty twenty, a no means it's not a priority for twenty twenty. Fair? Marty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yep.
Michael?
No.
Laura?
It's on cannabis?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, cannabis.
Just whether it's a priority for twenty twenty.
You're correct.
I'm gonna go no.
I'm gonna say yes. Okay, fireworks. Marty?
It's a priority for people that are affected by it most, but, um, with the amount of time and without knowing, uh, I would say no.
Linda?
No.
Michael?
Not for twenty twenty.
Laura?
No.
No for myself. Rotational mayor, Marty?
No.
Linda?
Uh, for twenty twenty?
Yes.
Um, no.
Michael?
No.
Laura?
No.
No. Uh, Charter City, uh, I, I guess I should move it around, I'm sorry, Marty, I keep going to you. Well, you're right, they're, they're your thoughts, so that's why I'm making it easy. Marty?
Um, if, if it was crazily possible, yes.
Okay. Linda?
Yes.
Uh, Laura?
No.
Michael?
No.
I'm gonna say no. Fire district. Marty?
Not enough time, no.
Linda?
No.
Uh, Laura, sorry.
No.
Michael?
I would have supported it, but since Marty pulled his support for it.
I'll trade you that one.
Is that a no, Michael?
No, we'll make it unanimous.
All right, so we'll say no. Hotel tax, what do we all agree that that's already been pursuing? We don't.
Correct.
What's that?
Yes.
Let's move on to term limits. Uh, Marty?
No.
Linda?
Um, not for this election.
Laura?
No.
Michael?
No.
Because no. Uh, so that takes you to Marty's list, so let's go into local purchasing again. It's either yes, to have it done now, or, uh, Tuesday, meaning bringing it up in the strategic planning session. Um, uh, Linda?
Um, yes.
Um, for now, okay, uh, Laura?
Can you clarify what you're asking?
I'm asking if you want staff being given the direction now to go ahead and do the work and bring it back?
Oh, no.
Or to bring it in strategic session on Tuesday?
Yeah, it should be, no, bring it back on Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. Um, uh, Marty?
Um, it seems best fitting in on Tuesday.
Michael?
Yeah, I, I support it, but let's discuss it on Tuesday.
Okay, I'm for Tuesday. Um, we've done term limits, rotation mayor, cannabis dispensary, campaign finance. Linda?
Yes, for this year, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know, you said for now or for Tuesday.
You're correct.
Um, no, I'm gonna say yes.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Laura?
Tuesday.
Marty?
Tuesday.
Michael?
Tuesday.
I'm gonna say Tuesday. Okay, um, I appreciate everybody, like, uh, has been indicated, this is the first time having, uh, this discussion and having our community a, a part of it. Um, like, hopefully, uh, city clerk has got enough data and information. And, um, I'm gonna share, too, um, I think we came well in the sense of realizing staff has a lot to prioritize. And as Michael said, too, bottom line, we gotta make sure this, uh, the budget balances and our staff is, uh, reflected and, uh, driven and focused on that main endeavor for all of us. We can't, we don't borrow here, we've got the balance, so we're not the federal government. Um, with that, I want to move around to any, uh, additional, uh, off this topic, please, to council comments, uh, from any of, uh, council members. Linda?
You know what, come back, come back to me, I had something, I've got to find my notes.
Okay, no problem, anybody else? Marty?
Just wanted to say thank you all for this, um, this discussion, I mean, it's, um, it's definitely a move forward. Thank you.
Laura?
Um, just thank you, Melissa, for coordinating, I know this is complicated and challenging, and I, um, I really like that we're getting, uh, public comments that are getting posted on our website. Um, I think that's awesome, and I'd like to see that moving forward. So that if public comments are coming in on a, agenda items, or public comments that they want to have, they, um, for no, items on the agenda, that you're posting those under one document on the website, I think it's awesome, I love it, so continue it. Even when COVID's over, I think we've learned a lot of new things, and I think what will come out of this will be only better.
Michael?
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll, uh, agree with Laura definitely on that, definitely appreciate everything staff has done to get us up and running on this. And, um, I, I think it's great. I also wanted to thank, uh, both Marty and Linda for bringing this up. I, it's been, uh, I think we've been discussing this for a couple of years now, on how to bring things forward. So, e- even though I don't agree with everything you guys brought forward, I think having the conversation is definitely important. So, thank you both for, uh, kind of driving that and making sure that we're having the conversation. And, uh, I look forward to, uh, Tuesday's discussion as well, so thank you.
Linda?
Am I, am I, no, I'm not meeting. No, I just wanted to thank everyone for the discussion, um, tonight. I think it's really important that we're able to initiate policy. Um, I just, I actually had a quick comment, maybe, maybe question, but I, I think the city's been doing an excellent job on the social media posts, um, the PSA announcement. Um, and I was wondering if it would be possible to do some posts around some of the essential services? I know that some of the questions I'm getting are like, uh, this one I brought up before, I don't think on this meeting, but like as far as what, you know, is gardening, are gardening, uh, are gardeners essential workers? Construction are the essential workers, but maybe we could do little posts that come directly from the order, saying like, this is an essential worker. And we, I mean, you know, Governor Newsom came out today, and apparently now they're working on a plan to open up business again. But in the meantime, people are still wondering if they can work, especially if they have their own business. So just a, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and again, uh, I want to, uh, thank everybody, uh, for the, the good dialogue. And again, I think we were reasonable in saying out of all of these, we have one item that we're asking, if I'm correct, one specific item, asking staff to bring back, whether, and I'll use your words, Marty, like a study session, fact-finding, you know, but doing it more expedited to make it to determination for the twenty twenty. So at least we've given direction, we haven't, uh, overwhelmed, and I think that's, uh, reasonable, uh, on all of us. Um, two items obviously will come up in the Tuesday session. So what I, what, you know, what I want to end with is that, as there are tough and challenging times, um, there was something last night that I was asked, uh, to go by, and, or at least told I could, uh, I was given permission to leave the house. Um, and what it was, was on the one hundred block of Poplar. And what they had decided to do was to basically, earlier and throughout that, was to go out and write thank you, um, to basically, to the mail carrier, to the, uh, uh, garbage person, to the FedEx, to, uh, the Amazon. And it was, uh, Carlos is a big hit over there, that's, that's your mail carrier. Um, but it was, um, them just getting together, uh, with distance. All, we were all wearing masks, um, and it was just a matter of, uh, them doing something, uh, together as a neighborhood. So even as we have challenging times with, uh, a lot, a lot ahead of us, uh, but, uh, when we see our community in our neighborhood, uh, coming together and doing things, just a simple thank you goes a long way. So I encourage people to try to be, um, understanding. Um, and, you know, remember that we're all human, we all have bad days, and this has been a challenging time for all of us that none of us could ever imagined, as we celebrated the holidays last year, that we would be embarking upon that this year. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their time and staff for your presentation and your diligence. And we're gonna adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on March twenty eighth. And, yes, we'll be right back here on Zoom. Everybody enjoy, be safe, be healthy, be strong. Good night.